The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners, and businesses just like you. Looking for the best pool supplies? Look no further than Dohany's Pool Supplies. With a history dating back to 1967, this family-owned business offers everything families need to keep their pools clean and sparkling, from chemicals to equipment. Plus, customers enjoy free shipping on all orders. Visit Dohany's Pool Supplies today at dohany.com, D-O-H-E-N-Y dot com, to learn more. Broker Michelle Parno has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard-to-find small-batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gendier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name, Epic Products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@iliadgrow.com. Larissy and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest's own Brian Larissy specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward, just upload, review, and file. For a free quote, visit larissycpa.com now. That's L-A-R-I-S-E-Y-C-P-A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. We offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services, plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. Relaxing in a luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, Botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers, and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at 224-768-8028, or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters, Otto John C., Helen Herrick, and J.M.
That's better?
Yep, Hubler.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Thanks.
I know that's-
How's things going?
I know that ceiling.
Yes, I am at work today.
After I've had a few, after I've had a few, I know that ceiling very well. First things first, I went by your place. Sega, could I have the classic combination of the Community Matters with a Malort on the side, please?
Got my ride up.
Thank you. Here we are at Ravinia Brewing with some lovely Carl Jepson's beverage, otherwise known as Malort. And we're gonna swig it now with some Community Matters. God bless America, Ravinia Brewing. Oh, delicious. Had a good time, love Sega, Sega Genesis is his new name. I, couple, couple points, I was the only, I was the only conservative in the place, and I was the only non-Jewish guy in the place. And I can't believe that would happen if I go to a Highland Park bar. But the people that I met there, we all bonded together, and we don't like either presidential candidate. So we had a few, and you had, of course, Malort. So it was one big happy family on a Saturday afternoon, I want to say. Great joint, I vouch, I vouch.
Nice, I'm glad you liked it, and I appreciate you coming out and supporting.
Well, of course. And then, I don't know if your wife was behind the bar, or somebody's wife was behind the bar. Everybody was all hands pitching in, it was, it was, it was a great scene. Brought my wife there, she had a good time, so if you're in, you're in Highland Park, I can't remember the guys' names, you had a couple brothers there, we were, you know, we're all talking politics and stuff, and it was, it was fantastic, fantastic, two sides to a coin, I love it. So Jeff, we brought you back on, okay, we vouch for your place, because if I'm gonna, you know, support you, I gotta go to the place, and-
For sure.
I'm sure I'm the only person in the history of Highland Park that would tip one back on Malort, but there was another city council meeting, and you read a little statement there.
Uh, Councilmember Hubler.
During the February 12th meetings of the City Council and Committee of the Whole, I voluntarily recuse myself from the discussion because state law requires that I do not participate in the discussions or votes related to the sale, distribution, or manufacture of alcohol. Our city manager made it very clear on the agenda, and in emails to the citizens, organizations, and the press stating, I quote, "It is important for the public to understand that the intent of this agenda and its inclusion of two mutually exclusive ordinances is specifically to allow for robust discussion among City Council and about city policy. This is not a discussion about a particular liquor license holder, and options are presented so the council has the flexibility to move forward with whichever path it deems to be in the best interest of the city." Unquote. Unfortunately, within the first 30 seconds of the mayor's scripted opening, it was clear that our city manager's statement was not being adhered to, as the mayor said, "We are here because, quote, 'the city's ethics guidelines were not being followed,' unquote." It turns out that an enormous part of the Committee of the Whole meeting was an ethics tribunal regarding me, without me being present, without me having representation, without me being called back into the room, and without public notice. At the moment, the issue changed, and every time it lapsed back to ethics, the city's legal council should have stepped up to and brought me back to the room so I could address the issues directly and defend myself with respect to the ethics discussion. But they did not. This was a failure of the mayor, the city manager, and corporate council. They allowed this to occur without me being present and without proper notice per the Open Meetings Act. However, what is done is done. My reputation has been tarnished, nasty inferences and comparisons made, and now, two weeks later, I am able to respond to the allegations, slanderous statements, and distortions of the facts made by members of the City Council. Before my response, I would like to publicly clarify several discussions I have had with the city's corporate council. Beginning with my orientation in May of last year, Mr. Elrod, and I have had several discussions about the recusal process concerning municipal law. Mr. Elrod stated that, in general, I should err on the side of not recusing myself as it relates to discussions of business matters in the city, including business incentive programs, outdoor dining issues, and anything related to restaurants, as long as the matter discussed is not directly about my two Highland Park businesses. He stated that the voters of Highland Park, him being one, elected me to bring my expertise and viewpoints as a business restaurant owner to the City Council, so I should not feel forced to recuse myself from those discussions. Mr. Elrod, does that fairly represent our conversations? Okay, continuing, I really want to thank all the people who came out and spoke, and in particular, I am grateful for their kind words and support. After being attacked for three weeks straight, it's nice to know there are residents out there who understand why I wanted to serve this community, and that I truly want to make it a better place for all of us to live and raise our families. The time you have spent getting involved, your encouragement and support mean more than you can imagine to my family and me during this time. I chose to serve the voters of Highland Park because we knew the city needs change. That message was not always well-received by some, but it's a message I believe in. You and the other Highland Park residents have made it clear that you want me to continue to serve, and I appreciate all of that regardless of the final outcome. I would also like to thank the business community and the H.P. Chamber of Commerce, and members of those groups who voiced their support for me. This law unjustly discriminates against all of them, and I will continue to support you as you have supported me. I've thought long and hard with my friends and family about how to respond to the deeply insulting slanderous accusations and rhetoric, but I'm not going to do that. When this council presented the slogan "Together Highland Park, Unidos", I was very impressed with the thoughtfulness of the statement and the message it conveyed. However, it's become clear that the leadership in Highland Park and the council are anything but together and united. The actions of this council to attempt to scapegoat one of their members as unethical was clearly done for political gain, and that only serves to divide this community. As Aaron Frye stated at the last council meeting, "We are seeing standard divisive politics at play, and the people in this community are not blind to what is going on." "Together Highland Park, Unidos" starts at the top with all of us, so I'm going to do my part to live up to the ideals of that statement for the betterment of this community and move on. Thank you.
And I just wanna, you know, regroup with you to make sure I have my bearings, because the perception that I'm getting, the people that I'm talking to, is you are a political threat to Nancy Roderick, and there's stuff going on behind the scenes that you cannot confirm or deny, or maybe you can confirm some of it, but a lot of stuff seems to be happening, happening to you all at once. Second thing to, to address, this is gonna be a laundry list, and you can pick and choose, so that way you don't have to answer. Bloomberg, Mr. Bowtie, he did not have a bowtie at the last meeting, he must have heard our show. He read off an apology.
Um, I, I just want to address a comment that I made last Monday, regrettably. In my effort to explain that election commissions are not responsible for determining the qualifications of candidates, I made a reference to a former New York Senator, Congressman, as an example. This is exactly what occurred with George Santos when he lied to his voters. And unfortunately, in the context of the greater conversation, I inadvertently insulted my colleague, Councilmember Hubler, and I, I'm, I don't feel that way about you. I respect you, I appreciate your participation here, and I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The comparing, I think he said he, the last meeting, or the meeting before, he called you Santos, whoever that is, and he apologized for that, which was kinda weird, you read something off, so there was a lot of stuff going on, and we're not gonna touch the, the lawsuit, we'll let the, you know, the, the process handle itself, but we can't talk about what was public the other night at the City Council meeting. What the hell's going on over there?
Yeah, I mean, there seems to be a division within the City Council where, rather than, you know, what I would say is doing the right thing and, and treating restaurant owners who happen to have liquor license like anybody else in the city that are, that bring in expertise to the City Council to be able to help the city, serve, there's people who would rather play politics and try to get their own people in by getting the people that maybe they don't always agree with out. And it's really, you know, there, there's a guy, a mug club member here who came and spoke, Aaron.
Hello, my name is Aaron Frye, I am a member of Ravinia Neighborhood. You know, I've, one of the younger residents here, young family, little kindergartner, three-year-old, and I have looked to move to Ravinia three times. First time, too slow, went to Evanston. Came up again, more space, no, moved back to Evanston, too slow. Came up a third time, Ravinia Brewing was there. The district down there felt lively, there was a community, there were people my age, there were young families. The schools that we would see were looking to be closed down were now filled. People were moving into Highland Park, and Highland Park is a great community because of small businesses and the contributions they've made, the community that they've been able to build. But when I look at politics as a whole, and we all look at our country, and we see the, the lack of hope a little bit, we want people that can come in and make a difference, that can represent us, that can represent our needs, our life stage, our values. And even at the, the town level, the city level, where we put people into power, and we start to see standard politics sort of play out. It's the, it's the lunchroom, everything about the, the high school lunchroom tells you about humans and how they interact. You're, you're part of us or you're not? And if you're not, then we are going to find ways to go after the people that support you, your donors. We'll find ways to tie you up in litigation, we'll find ways to dig into laws and question your ethics. If you're the President of the United States, your birth certificate, we'll find all of these little slippery, sneaky little things to do. And the rest of the people that live in this community, we see that kind of stuff. We're not, we're not blind to what is going on and why somebody, why somebody is being made a target. And so we keep that in mind as we make our decisions, we keep that in mind as we vote, and we hope that you guys keep that in mind as you make this right. All right, thank you.
He put it eloquently, and I don't have his quote in front of me, but I read it, and it's really just, the, the gist of it is like, we're a small-town government made up of basically servants who are volunteering their time to be able to help the city, and instead, we're acting like we're Republicans versus Democrats, the national, basically, political scene where you just try to destroy, literally destroy, your political enemies versus trying to do good for the community. And I feel like that is, you know, that's obviously not a direct quote from him, but that's essentially what he was saying, it's like, and he said, the people of Highland Park are smarter than that. They see what's going on, and they, they, they understand why things are being done, and it's, nobody thinks it's a good thing for Highland Park. People realize that Highland Park, the government needs to work for the citizens of Highland Park and do what they're requesting and make Highland Park a better place to live, not try to do something to get a fourth, or fifth, or sixth term and just keep control over the city for as long as you possibly can. We need to unite as a City Council and actually show some leadership, and that's what's missing right now.
I mean, when you say it's a political thing, it's not a Republican versus Democratic thing, you're too popular. That's the political thing, and-
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's one group versus another, it's maintaining political power for, you know, if you just look at the division of, of where the votes aligned, two and a half weeks ago for the vote, it was three to three, and you had basically three people who had been in power for, I think all of them are on their fourth term, versus three people who are all on their first term. And it's become pretty clear that there's the old school versus the new school, and rather than, you know, try to work as a team and, and figure things out, it's no, we can get rid of one of them, and then we'll have more power because we can appoint somebody. And it's, that's really what seems to be going on, and it's, it's really a shame. I mean, I think the public has spoken, I think the public would speak if there was some sort of referendum, like- Yeah, they're still speaking, and I, I think the public would speak if there's a referendum, and I think it would be clear what the public wants. There was a gentleman who spoke at the meeting on Monday, and he made it very clear that we could do a, a public referendum.
My name is Will Hendrick, I'm Highland Park resident. I'm back for more on the liquor license issue, I know we all had a lot of fun with that, so wanted to continue that. At our last meeting, this council expressed commitment to the principles of democracy and maintaining an impartial posture in its actions. Councilmember Stone, I believe that was specifically mentioned in your policy speech. But I heard from all the members, including those who voted nay, on the proposal in question, stressed this to some degree, or at least addressed democracy and impartiality. I fully support these values. For this reason, I respectfully request that the City Council consider initiating a referendum considering the ordinance amending Section 119 dot 320 of our city code regarding the local liquor license applications. As you know, the Illinois Constitution and state statutes provide pathways for public questions to be decided by the voters. A referendum on this ordinance would allow the residents of Highland Park to directly express the views on the matter of significant community interest. Some of us believe it, the ordinance makes sense, some of us have concerns. A referendum provides a clear path to a resolution, a resolution which, by the way, if you could, could tell from the beginning of this meeting, that we do not yet have. Some have suggested a resident-led petition. The preferred path in my mind is one initiated by you all, because it would be legally binding, whereas my understanding of the law is one initiated by the public would be advisory only. I'm not sure that really helps us and kinda just wastes our time. Running out of time here, so I'll just wrap it up. But the act of putting the question to the public is itself neutral, and a referendum is the ultimate expression of listening and empowering our community while also addressing the issues that concern some of you. Finally, just before I wrap up, Councilmember Bloomberg, I appreciate your apology. I know that's probably not the easiest thing to do, and that was a very good step in the right direction. Thank you.
And my guess is it would be 80% of the people who'd want to, to change the ordinance, but is that, is the City Council going to listen to the public? Based on some of the comments, it kinda sounds like they won't, but we'll see.
Maybe I'll do the old Lake Forest Podcast petition and see how many people wanna, you know, unofficial, Jeff, unofficial, to, you know, to help out, because it's, it's boring over here in Lake, Lake Forest. I gotta go over to Highland Park, so the second thing-
I could use some boring right now.
They say good city management is boring, and it's definitely not boring there. So, so Jeff, talk to me about the legal side of things, because you made a comment about that, too. Talk to me like I'm a 10-year-old, what, what, what happened in that first meeting? And what was the advice, or the counsel, or whatever the hell you wanna call it, what went down?
So there's, there's a couple things going on legally, and there, and one is there's state laws versus our common law ethics code and just common law conflict of interest. So you kinda have to separate those, and that's really where I, I think people are sort of misunderstanding what is the actual state law which is an issue, and then what, what are, what's the municipal law which is an issue? So our, our council and I have had several discussions, because I knew going into this there would be a lot of perception of conflict of interest. So when it comes to the municipality and common law and conflict of interest and ethics, we have had multiple discussions, and I think I made that clear on Monday night, and he even agreed with our state, my statement, which essentially was, "I should err on the side that I was elected to give my voice as a business owner, and as long as the ordinance we're discussing is not directly affecting my business", he and I both agreed that it is not a conflict of interest. So when, and I should give my opinion as a business owner, because I have an expertise there that other business owners do not, or other council members do not. So he confirmed that in the meeting, but what was interesting two and a half weeks ago is it was really made into an ethics tribunal, you know, that I wasn't prejudiced in that, and that I didn't have representation for. In fact, the mayor started the discussion in the first 30 seconds of the discussion before anybody said anything. She said, "We're here to discuss ethics."
Because the city's ethics guidelines were not being followed. Nobody, nobody went looking for this conflict. Upon taking office, we each took a pledge to uphold the laws of Highland Park that includes following protections against conflicts of interest. I'm gonna share with you the city of Highland Park ethics guidelines.
Which is completely unfounded. There was nothing unethical that was done. You know, one of the councilwomen also said that I shouldn't be discussing, like, in her opinion, or I think she tried to say there was other people telling her in the community that I shouldn't be involved in the incentive discussion, and that's unethical. Well, if you have a lawyer who's saying that this is something you should be discussing, and it's clearly something not related to my business, it's not even on the same business district that I'm in, yes, I think I should be able to give insight as a business owner of how these incentives will help bring businesses and restaurants to Highland Park. And I think that, you know, discussion is important, and I think there's a reason that we've changed a lot of the incentives since I've been in office for less than a year. And I think that there is, you know, these incentives are going to work, and it's not just for big businesses that we're trying to bring in. We passed and we actually officially gave some money to a local place called Norton's to put, bring in all new outdoor, outdoor furniture last Monday. And that was something that I pushed hard for, and along with the other council members, we voted for. But that was something that until I was elected was not even something that was on the table. But yet, I, some people think I shouldn't be talking about that, because I theoretically could apply for the same grant, which we haven't, but we could. And speaking of that, I'm gonna give a little plug of why I'm at the bar. We got official approval, and I'll spin this around, I don't know if this will work, but we had our inspection today, and we now have our outdoor furniture. So starting tonight, not that the weather's gonna be nice enough tonight, but starting tonight, we will be able to have some outdoor dining. So if it's 65 on the weekend, and you wanna go somewhere and sit outside and have some good tacos, a burger, a beer, whatever, stop by.
Support the cause. Jeff, Jeff, the perception I'm getting, and I feel like Nancy Roderick here, because, you know, I'm talking to you about things that I'm hearing, but I do hear a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff. My part, starting with my partner, Joe Weiss, he made a comment on our podcast that her political career is over.
Yeah, and I hate to say it in these terms, but just a few weeks after she lost that 22 primary to Rochford, the very tragic and horrible shootings happened in Highland Park, and she was all, she was on national news, if you remember, she was testifying before Congress and all that. And she really did, you know, even I don't, may have some policy disagreements with her. I will give her credit that she did a good job of uniting most people in Highland Park, and she, to where I think she has been talking about running for something else. The word is, we've talked about this before on the podcast, that Dick Durbin is probably gonna retire in a couple years, and that Brad Schneider would then run for US Senate, which would then open that up, and she might throw her name into that or to something else. But I'm gonna tell you, after this, her political career is done.
After this, because he's a political guy, I'm a political guy at the bar, depending on who I'm talking to, because it's really coming across as she's, she and her crew are anti-business, that's the vibe that we're getting. And the reason Joe is saying that he'd be here right now, but he works for a living, poor sucker. He could have an easy job like owning a bar, but he, he's, there, there is a crew of Nancy Roderick, Prue Beidler, Julie Morrison, and Susan Garrett, but they all seem to congregate around with political donations, and they always lean against progress, especially on, on small businesses. The reason why it came up, Prue Beidler could have been mayor, that could have been the Nancy Roderick of Lake Forest. She didn't get voted, but what she did do with her crew, Susan Garrett, and this is not alleged, because I was there when I saw Jeff, Susan Garrett berated a baker in town, a dessert maker in town, Gerhart's, to take out the opposing mayor's sign out of the window. I mean, berating, threatening boycotts and whatnot, and they're all sort of that same crew. Now, I don't know how much of it envelops over the Highland Park, but the reason why I'm so involved with you on this is if your vote matters, okay, and we could have had the similar situation in Lake Forest that is going on in Highland Park right now, but Nancy Roderick now, she knows her political career is over, and supposedly she wants to take over for Schneider's seat, so maybe she, she doesn't care, but will anybody vote for, you know, in, in that office? Joe says the career is over, do you got any thoughts on that, or you can give me the old no comment, Pete?
I mean, I, I don't mind commenting, but I don't have a lot to comment about, so I, I, I don't, I've never been too worried about what's going on in Lake Forest, what's going on in Northfield. I got involved in Highland Park politics because I saw what was going on in Highland Park. You know, and even my wife was like, "When did you decide you wanted to be a politician?" I'm like, "I don't really wanna be a politician, I wanna make my town better."
Yeah, yeah.
And so I can't speak to, I don't even know some of those people that you've mentioned, but what I can say-
Just stick to Nancy Roderick and anti-business, that's all I wanna-
So what I, what I do know is I, I think the public is against the decision that has been made. And I think anytime you go against the public will, when the public is very united against it, like I said, I think a referendum could pass like 80 to 20, you know, 80% of the people. You're probably not doing something that's in the best interest if you have a long-term political career or aspirations beyond the next three years where you're serving as mayor. I'm not a political advisor, I'm not gonna say that she's making the wrong decision, decision. I just know publicly, it is not, the decision that was made was, is not supported within the community at large.
Jeff, what's next, man, okay, do I have to wait for the next city council meeting, like, what, what's, like, will there be a referendum, or? Like, what, what's, like, will there be a referendum or?
What I've been, I'm taking things day by day. I've had several people approach me. We've actually looked into some of the referendum stuff. Other people I know are looking into it. You know, I'm just, right now, I'm trying to run my business. I'm here, you know, today, meeting with the city inspector, getting our outdoor dining approved. You know, and it's, it's day by day. It's kind of the way I'm handling it. And I really just hope that as a city council, we can be a little more united and work together to make the city better versus, you know, the barbs that are going back and forth right now.
Would it help if I put up, just for the hell of it, you know, a vote, say, hey, should there be a referendum on this issue? Be curious to see what, you know, comes in. Vote, just like Chicago voting, vote as many times as you want. But what, what should the question be? How should I phrase the question if I would do such a thing, Jeff?
I guess you would just say is, is someone with a, because this all comes down to someone with a liquor license. So is someone with a liquor license, should they be allowed to serve as a city council member or mayor of Highland Park? Plain and simple. And, you know, it's my answer, and I think a lot of the people's answer is sure, of course they should. And there's other communities, you know, Highwood has a sitting city council member who owns 28 Mile. You know, there's places all over that have had or currently have. And it really is all governed by the state anyway. The state liquor license laws kind of dictate that you have to recuse yourself from discussions. So all that stuff, which we are now very well aware of, kind of makes the conflict of interest idea go away. It's all taken care of. Like, nobody's going to put their liquor license on the line to, to have a discussion when they know that it is illegal to do so. You know, it's not even judgmental, like somebody, there's been all kinds of other potential conflicts of interest which are really up to the person to recuse themselves. And this isn't one of them. It's nicely well-defined, which actually is one of the problem. Like when, you know, we're going to, I think, have an ethics code discussion in April, and it really isn't well-defined. You talk with the lawyer, you say, well, I have this relationship. What do you think about this? But there are no real rules defined, except when it comes to liquor, which should make this a no-brainer, that, hey, everything's well-defined. I would have to recuse myself in any liquor license law discussions, and we move on.
All right. To sum it up, Jeff, because we're going to let you go. You got stuff to do. You got inspectors coming in. Hopefully you get the good ones. Like the bear. The, don't get a grade of C. No, it's not that kind of inspector. But in hindsight, you could have been at that vote. You didn't have to leave, right? You could have been there, the advice that you're getting. You left, but you could have stayed and voted, and this would have been a non-issue. Am I looking at that the right way?
I mean, there's an argument that this was a city ordinance, which per the letter of the Illinois law does not affect, you know, the manufacture or sale because I'm still got a liquor license. I guess it doesn't change whether or not I can still sell, manufacture, or distribute alcohol. So there is a debate that voting on whether I could serve on city council is allowed. I personally think this gets, it's more, so there's that risk. And there's the, you know, you obviously don't want to do anything to put your state liquor license on the line. But I also think this gets in, that actually is a little bit more of the ethical question. This really is a vote, or was a vote about me. I mean, it could affect Jim Letterer at Bluegrass if he decides he wants to run for mayor or something. It could affect a lot of other restaurant owners and people. But I am directly tied to this because it will directly affect me. And that's kind of the way I look at it, too, with the other things like business incentives or outdoor dining or things that directly affect my business. If I'm applying for it, and I'm saying, hey, I would like a grant to get for outdoor furniture, much like Norton's just received on Monday. I just, that, that's that ethical portion where I feel I need to recuse myself. So it's kind of a twofold thing of looking at it, and it definitely, the ethical one was, hey, this does directly affect me, so I, I probably should not vote on this, even though it would have made the difference. But there's also the liquor licenses is, I mean, that's, that's this business. That's the livelihood on the line. There, you don't want to take chances with something like that. So really, it was a no-brainer to recuse myself, and I just hope different, different decisions were made by other people.
Jeff, you got to GoFundMe to help support your, your legal fund. Is that correct?
Yes, and we would really, we could really use some contributions to that. Unfortunately, you know, you have insurance which supposedly would pay for things, and they don't, and they deny. And we just have to fight this ourselves. We're hoping that, you know, we'll be able to go to mediation and get this taken care of. But, you know, every day it was, it's just more money that is going to lawyers. And as everybody or anybody who's been in a situation like this knows, lawyers are not cheap. So those bills are getting very large.
Go in, whether it's in Logan Square, whether it's in Highland Park, right? Buy a community locker, shoot it down with a Malort, and have a good time. Jeff, thanks for coming back, man. Thanks for giving me 20 minutes. Say hi to Sega for me.
Will do. I appreciate it.
The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners, and businesses just like you.
Thanks again.
Looking for the best pool supplies? Look no further than Dohany's Pool Supplies. With a history dating back to 1967, this family-owned business offers everything families need to keep their pools clean and sparkling, from chemicals to equipment. Plus, customers enjoy free shipping on all orders. Visit Dohany's Pool Supplies today at Dohany.com, D-O-H-E-N-Y.com, to learn more. Broker Michelle Parnell has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Illiad Epic Grove. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard-to-find small-badge products that will delight both the occasional user and gendier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name, Epic Products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@illiadgrow.com. Larissee and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest's own Brian Larissee specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review, and file. For a free quote, visit larisseycpa.com now. That's L-A-R-I-S-E-Y-C-P-A.com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. A relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers, and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at 224-768-8028, or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Otto, John C., Helen, Herrick, and J.M.